Fine, Trudy, I'll call you in the evening with the commission order. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is approval of minutes.
Movement to the second.
The motion in the second to approve minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify the same "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda. In addition to the agenda, Commissioner Volk asked if I'd include a request from the Fair Board for some additional funding. We'll put that under new business.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Same.
All right. Motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify the same "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First up on our agenda is the burn ban discussion. I brought this up and I put this on the agenda. Some concerned individuals were in my office yesterday discussing this and asked if we'd have a discussion about our existing burn ban. And so I asked Sheriff Nelson and Chris Jaeger and Chief Waltecott to come in and discuss this, burn ban with us. Give us any updates on the calls that have been going out, received, those kind of situations, and if we wanted to make any adjustments to that. So, Steve, do you have any updates from your department on how the calls have been going or number of calls or...
We haven't had as many lately.
Okay.
But we're just giving them on a case-by-case basis.
You think that changed after we made the changes to the burn ban to go up a level?
I don't know.
Don't know? Chris? Everything's still the same as far as statewide, countywide?
I haven't heard much updates from a lot of the other fire chiefs. I know I've talked to Sean a couple times. Beyond that, taking it day by day.
Okay. Chief?
The, I think a big improvement came with adding the high category to it. You know, when you guys last amended it back in earlier, we were going in a couple weeks ago. I think that was a bonus. The stuff that we've been going through now is either an actual fire that has to get put out, you know, accidental or whichever. Mutually call here and there. And, you know, when the ban goes active and the weather service satellites are watching, you know, we do respond to, if they're big enough and the satellites pick them up, you know, then we do end up going to them too. But as far as, you know, just adding the high category gained a lot of ground for a lot, I think, so.
You think that satisfied a lot of needs?
I think so, from what I've heard. Everybody, you know, I'm not going to say everybody, but majority of the people that I've talked to adding that high category, you know, that's what a lot of them were looking for. You know, majority of last week was all in the high category, so there was a lot of days to burn there. And they were nice days to burn. You know, I, I don't think, you know, some of the moderate days that we had weren't ideal for burning, so tossing that high category in there really gave them the extra days. I guess that did some good, but...
Have we seen a change in the number of farmers that have called in their burns?
Yes.
More have, or?
They don't call, well, they've been calling them in, but they've also been calling and asking, okay, if they can burn or not, which our answer is check the website, but let's check the fire data. We don't have time, have time to check every day, but...
I know it seems, it seems like they relay a lot more of them to us, or they have been, you know?
If we have time, we'll tell them, yes, it's a, today, we had one call, yeah, you can go today because it's in the high category, but...
It was in the high today?
Yep.
I think as the humidity was so...
Yesterday was very high, but today was high, I believe.
Yesterday we had humidity levels in that 20% or under, and today there was upwards towards 50%, and I think that makes a big, big difference in how they adjust their Rangeland Fire Index. So, individuals here, Mr. Dimmler, Mr. Friday, do you have anything that you'd like to share with the commission at this time?
Yeah, I do. I'm kind of in between a rock and a hard spot here. I mean, I was burning, it was a beautiful day. I didn't even know there was a website at the time, and, I mean, I hadn't heard about it, whatever. I'm out there burning on a Saturday, it snowed and rained, and you were out there, wasn't you, Sean?
Yeah, yeah.
Beautiful day, wasn't it?
It was, it was.
I didn't have anything out of place, I had my tractor, I had fire brakes around it. My tractor's sitting there, pickup's sitting there with water, and I'm burning, and all of a sudden, deputy shows up, jumps out, kind of half crazy, I thought. And I said, "What's the issue?" "You got 35, 40 fires going here." I said, "Well, I'm burning flaxwoods. That's what we gotta do, get the crop it." I say, "I know another deputy's there," and then the fire truck, there were four firemen in it, and then an ambulance, and I'm going, "Holy shit," you know? And there was nothing could have possibly been wrong. You see through a little tiny slew that drowns out and it gets some grass, and yeah, it drowns out and the grass grows in it and it burnt too. I mean, little tiny slew, nothing major. Beautiful day, I never even, I mean, there was no wind, nothing. And, well, you guys didn't put no fires out, you guys left, deputy left, the ambulance left. I say, "They're big, burning, no problems." One last week, I get a summons to come to court yesterday to plead either guilty or not guilty to a class B misdemeanor on something that is, has to be done in my case. I got 800 acres of flaxseed to burn. You know, I mean, I got my tractors, I got my fire brakes in, I don't even, I didn't even dare go and do it, even burn it after I got the letter. Because I can't go in there and take the plea deal and say, "Hey, uh," whatever, you know, and have 90 days suspended, suspended, you know? What if I get another one? What if actually I'm going to get another one? I'm going to get hit with, I'm definitely going to get 30 days, you know? I gotta get this crop in the ground. I can't go to FSA and say I couldn't do it because I've flax froze. I can't go to my crop insurance and say I didn't get it planned because that flax froze, I couldn't get burned. I mean, it's just not working. It doesn't, not every situation is the same as somebody driving by lighting a big slew of cattails on fire or driving away. We're not all doing that. Some of us have a legitimate reason, we're out burning, and some of us are just trying to reclaim land that's been underwater and finally drying up and up where you could dig into it. And it's, it's not working. It doesn't work for, you can't have a, you know, they set that thing, I think Blaine told me at 6:00 in the morning, "Well, look how windy it is right now, I wouldn't even light a fire right now." Because it's too windy today. It's high, you can burn, but today's a dangerous day to burn. A little common sense goes a long ways. And right now, there's not that being used here. None. It, it doesn't work. You can't, you can't just say at 6:00 in the morning, "It's going to be a good burn day." It's not going to. I don't know where this map comes from or who sets it up, but it's not going to work.
Chris, where does the map come from?
Forestry Service puts the map out.
Autumn March call it?
Mm-hmm.
Pismar.
Yep. And they check all, what I've been told is they check some of the end down stations, the weather stations for current conditions across the state, so... That's all they justify the fire index rating.
In my opinion, it helps significantly to go to high. I think a lot of guys have gotten a lot of burning done, but I agree exactly with what Dave said, you know? Today's not a good day to go out and light a fire. We got, we got pretty high winds, you know? Things, things can get away pretty quick in these types of winds, you know? And I, I know I talked to a number of the commissioners a number of weeks ago about this. That particular day, I was talking to, I know Adam, I was standing in my grandpa's quonset. It was actively raining, and it was considered high that day because that's what the map said, you know? The map helps, going to high helped. It's still not perfect. I think the commission dropped the ball big time by not having it at high on the first place. That was, Sean Waltecall's recommendation was to be at high in the first place. Me and my dad would likely not be sitting here because the incident that happened at my grandpa's farm was on high that day. We, we misread the map, and the deputy was on us really fast, you know? Had it been set at high in the first place like it was supposed to, a lot of these problems, a lot of these complaints that farmers are having would have never been there. I, I think the commission dropped the ball. I spoke to, I've spoke to every one of the commissioners, and almost everyone says that they wanted it at high. There's five of you, most of you wanted it at high, it wasn't set at high. I guess, I don't understand that. Majority rules, if the majority wanted it at high, why wasn't it set at moderate in the first place? And that's not a rhetorical question either.
Well, it was set at, it included all the, the index, not just moderate, it was everything. We put a burn ban in place, not to punish anybody, but to, to maintain safety for the public and for responders. You know, and we don't, we don't do it for, we can't do it piecemeal by this section or this township. It's, you know, it was a countywide, and it was based a lot on what the state's recommendation. The state was in a high elevated state at that particular time. You know as well as anybody here how dry it is out there, you know, and how quickly things can get away from anybody at any particular time. And yeah, we, we sat around here, all five of us together, and made that decision. And that was back on the April 13th. Or, no, it was March 30th. April 13th, we adjusted it. Based on the changing conditions and the issues that we felt, and we wanted to give a better opportunity to producers to go out there and do that burning at those particular times. And that's why those adjustments were, were made. Is because of the issues that, that we were seeing and the complaints that we were receiving. But based on the recommendations that we had at the time and the information that we had, that's how the decisions were made.
Well, the most experienced person in here when it comes to fire safety and fire danger, his recommendation wasn't followed.
There were still other...
There were a bunch that just shot in the room, though.
I can't...
We had, we had all of the role fire chiefs here, we had a very robust discussion. We talked and we talked and we talked in circles, to be honest. And at the end of it, we kind of all decided that, and I'll talk from my perspective, Cole, okay? I always speak from my perspective, not everybody else up here. This is the first time we ever tried to use this graduated scale system. Previous to this, it was always just a blanket burn ban, and I hated those, because then it never gave us any flexibility to go out and do anything. So we tried to do this, this system where we had at least a graduated scale so we would have some days we could get some work done. We set it at moderate, we should have set it at high, I don't disagree, but at the time, we didn't know how many days were going to be moderate, how many days were going to be low, how many days were going to be high. It was quickly realized within a week that high was, high days were reasonable days to burn, and that's when we made the adjustment. I, I'll, I'll fess up to that, I was, I was wrong too, and I think, I felt that we should start lower and move higher as we saw how many days were in those categories to try and give people as much flexibility as we could, because at the same time, we, you know, like you said, we shouldn't be burning on today even though it is high, I realize that, but those very high, those, those red flag days, none of us, all of us know we shouldn't be burning, but to be blatantly honest, I've seen smoke flying on red flag days.
I don't...
So we, we have to have something in place to try to, at least try to protect stuff, and, and, but at the same time, still work with people to try to allow the things that need to be done to get done. And it, we're never going to put a perfect system in place. I, I realize that, and we're going to have to try to modify to try to get it closer to perfect. And, and I don't know how to fix what's already occurred, I don't know if we can, but all I can say is we can try our best to try to make it better.
What do we do with, like, you know, I mean, turning people, farmers into criminals for, for trying to do what they gotta do out there? I mean, that day I burned, I don't know what that, I don't even, what was moderate, was it high? I don't even know what it was.
It would have been high that day.
You showed me that map.
I think it was high, yeah.
Yeah, okay, it was high that day. Well, high's good now, but I gotta take it back then, and nobody put a fire out, you know? Actually, Steve, the deputy didn't even know what the hell to do out there. He called you that day. He was out there, he called you on the phone. He didn't know what to do. And he didn't know if he should keep the ambulance coming, the fire truck coming, he didn't know. And I was like, "I don't think we really need the ambulance out here or the fire truck," I said. And he was rattled, I mean, it was like, "Okay." And all of a sudden, I got a, I got a face in a class B misdemeanor for burning on a day that was high, and now today, high is fine, you've made adjustments, why don't you adjust? I don't want to go to court. I don't want, I don't care about the fine, but I don't want a class B misdemeanor. It's a criminal offense. Your driver's license, if they do a driving check on you, they look at that. If you want to get your crop, your, just insurers, they all, they watch all that shit. That's, you know, Scott's 60 years old over here, he's probably in an apartment, sorry, I have a parking ticket, now he's got a class B misdemeanor. It's not necessary, you guys. It's just not right. Deputy said that, you know, "I'm just doing my job," and he was, but so was I. This is a normal farming practice. I went, two days later, I went to South Dakota to pick up sulfur for him, and on the way back, I was never out of the sight of a fire, never out of the sight from South Dakota all the way up. Every farmer burns in the spring. They do it, they're going to do it next year. They did it back, my mother said my great-grandfather did it. It's what you do. It's a normal farming practice in Ramsey County. And now I got a misdemeanor because my dad said I'm 84 years old, I can't believe I lived to see this. I would have never dreamt that happened. Now I'm a criminal, you know? I sat in court the other day with one guy who took a poker stick and beat the hell out of a guy, put him in the hospital, he had to have stitches. Another one beat his wife up, put her in the hospital. And the woman beat up a guy with a fire stick, a hammer. Yeah, and, and they got, they got misdemeanors, and I'm sitting beside them, and I got a misdemeanor for burning a two-acre cattail slew.
Not only that, on our own property...
On our own property, of all things.
You know, like my dad said... We should have some property rights here, too. I understand you guys are trying to protect, you know, other people's property and all of that, but I can tell you that this, where this incident happened, my grandpa owns the whole section there. There, there's not a road, there's nothing there. We were out in the middle of a whole plowed section. That's one mile by one mile of nothing but our land.
And granted, the deputy was right, I mean, yeah, he was just doing his job, but so was I. This is what we do for a living. This is how we do it. That's how we've always did it. And if anybody near his farm, the only way to get rid of flaxseed is to burn it. You have to burn it. There's no other way. You can nail it.
No, I don't disagree with you. I, I had flaxseed last spring, I had to get rid of it, and it wasn't, I had the bird. I, I understand where you're coming from.
And your job is tough. I mean, it is. It's, to find the right mixture is, I don't know how you...
Both of your guys' situations, if it would have been in high, at the time, you would have been fine, yeah.
Yes, but it's exactly right. You know, and you're coming out and penalizing us, and we're your tax base. I mean, we're the ones that pay the taxes, the land taxes, we're the ones that give you the money to operate. And we're the ones that are paying for this gal that's got four cases open and four different attorneys, and she was getting another piece of paper to get another attorney tax, didn't she? She wanted to get a fourth, another sheet to get another attorney for the next case.
And she got the same sentence we did.
Yeah. And, I mean, it's just not right.
It's gotta be great to be sitting there.
We don't need to be criminals, you know?
It was.
Come out and slap my hands, tell me to straighten my shit out, that's fine, I, I get that daily from, at home. I mean, I'm used to it, but come out there and see I'm doing things right, and Sean, you made the comment, "Well, there's nothing here, you're doing, you're here and you're doing this right," and, and that was a perfect day for burning. There were, the smoke was going straight up in the air, and it was burning nice, and then, yep. I mean, I, and then I get a ticket in the mail, and I'm like, "What the hell?"
So, so what I gather, sitting up here, both of the individuals, if it was to where it was just a fine and not a misdemeanor, it wouldn't have been near the issues that were happening.
We wouldn't be sitting here talking to you, no. I had a real...
It's the misdemeanor that you're having the issues with, if not, now that it's at high...
That's what sent him off the other day. He's sitting there in court, and all of a sudden, we're sitting there with all these other...
This guy that was charged with domestic assault, it was a male, 50s, I don't know, some, some, and, you know, Judge Bowdy says, "Well, you're guilty of," or, "You're not guilty, you're charged with domestic assault, a B misdemeanor." And, wait a minute here, my dad has a court summons for a B misdemeanor. I, I just, I got a problem with that. I got a big problem with that.
Let's clarify something, Cole, is that we don't set the penalty regulations or the charges, that's the state legislature that does that.
I understand that.
But you did set the policy that warranted it.
We, we did, and it was based upon the, the information at the time that we made it. And we made what we thought...
Then the policy should have probably been changed, because you guys knew they were going to bring these slews. You knew they were going to burn it.
And we did, and we did change it, Scott.
It's just we can't retroactively change what occurred.
No, I, I...
And I, and I'm frustrated by that, it's not here...
I'm not asking you to go back anymore.
And, and I know, and we moved it to high, we actually have, and I was looking at other counties around us, we have a less restrictive burn ban than most of the counties around us. Cavalier Counties is a blanket ban. Benson County has, can only burn moderate below. So ours is actually more open than the other ones. I'm not saying that's right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm just saying that that's what the case is.
Well, and that's, I think that was kind of what finally decided where we set it in the first place, was we asked, you know, "What are all the counties around us, where do they put theirs?"
That was one of the...
Yeah, Nelson County at the time was moderate and below, Benson was moderate and below, so we just kind of started in that range, and yeah, you were...
No, we, we all learn from our mistakes, and that's fine, and let's just move on, but in the future, this has got to change.
No, and I, and I don't think anybody could disagree with that.
Let's go back and go on our meeting. Was it the 6th of April that we made the decision with the burn ban, or was it the 20th?
We, we had one on the 30th of March, we had a special meeting, and then we adjusted it on the 4th of May.
The blanket ban, right?
Right, that was the blanket, the blanket ban.
Right.
We, we had a change on the 30th of April to adjust it to a high, and then we changed it again on May 4th to include very high and extreme and red flag.
Okay, and, and everybody that's in this room, and I understand why everybody's upset, that all of those violations happened prior to us changing it, and it's, there's nothing that I can do that'll make you not mad at me, right?
No, we're not, we're not mad. I'm not, anyway, I'm not mad, I'm just, it just, this didn't work. And your intentions were probably fine, and it's a tough job, I'm not, I've been on the board too, it's not, it's not easy, but it didn't work. And, and now we're misdemeanors out there all over the place, and I know that wasn't your intention, but that's what happens. Steve, do you...
Bo, can you explain the, the fine and the, the process?
I can. So I'm Bo Cummings, I'm the state's attorney. You've probably seen my name on a piece of paper that you got. So our standard recommendation is something called a deferred imposition of sentence. That means as long as you don't break the law in the next 90 days, this will fall off your record like it never happened. What we have done, and what our standard recommendation has been, is to ask for a fine, no jail time, and if you can remain law-abiding for the 90 days, it disappears like it never happened. I understand that it is very upsetting for you gentlemen to have to sit in there with those same people. You know, that's something we could talk to the court about. If we have more burn ban cases, let's set them at the end of the day. I know that you were doing your job, the deputy is doing their job, but you have to understand that I'm also doing my job. The county commission set the law, and it's my job to prosecute the law. I don't think any of you are bad guys. My father-in-law's a farmer, I know exactly what it's like. I've been out there in the fields, I've worked the fields, I've helped him burn them. The problem is, when it happened, it was a violation of the law.
You know, and...
Can I ask a good question, Bo? I was going to ask Nelson, but you probably have a better idea. How many, how many of, how many violations do you have? How many burn ban violations are there?
That's a good question. We're in the double digits. We have 40 reports. We are not selectively enforcing it. The, the direction to the deputies is to go around. You know, if it's a day when we're not allowed to be burning, we're going to each of those sites. And that's time-consuming for the sheriff and his department. And I think the county commission has made the right call. We've added some flexibility, we're trying to figure it out. There is no perfect system. And that being said, I have been working with people, I've been talking with people, but there's a common misconception, and it's basically legal red tape. "I can't talk to you about your case until you've been advised of your rights." "If you don't have a lawyer, I can't talk to you until the judge tells you what your rights are, because I don't want you to incriminate yourself." I know that's really frustrating for a lot of producers, and it's frustrating for me too, because I'm a man-to-man guy. I'd rather talk to you about what's going on than have to deal with all this crap.
I got, I got told on my lawyer yesterday to watch what they say in here. And not say I'm going to do something...
And our lawyer advised us to call you, so...
Who's your lawyer?
Bruce Gibbons.
Okay.
And mine, mine said, "Oh..."
And I actually, I had a, I talked to the township lawyer too, he represents, you know, the Township Association. His recommendation was to call you too, so I mean, that, that's kind of interesting that you're saying, "You can call, but I'm not going to talk to you," you know? Because I had two lawyers whose advice was to go talk to you, so...
So have you had your initial appearance in the courtroom?
Yeah.
Yesterday?
Yes, yeah.
So now I can talk to you, now that we've passed that first hearing? I'm happy to talk to you guys after the meeting. You want to stick around?
Yeah, I want to stick around, too. I, I don't need to, I, I just, to me, it's, it's water under the bridge and... and I'm at the age or so what, I guess. If I'm gonna be a criminal, I'm a criminal.
It's like, but the thing of this, it's gonna come off your record. It's not gonna be.
I know, but it went on.
Yes, right. And I, I understand a hundred percent. I gave talk too.
But let's not do it again. That's what I'm getting at. I'm fine with it. I'll live with it. In ninety days, I'm, I can go rob a bank and do that. But, but let's not do it again, you know?
I, I don't think, I don't think we can disagree with that. The one thing I would say in, in, in the research I've done, and I don't know if my research is correct, some states attorney will have to correct me, is we can make it an infraction, correct?
No.
We can help.
It's set by the state legislature to be misdemeanor.
It's our co-centric.
So the minute we do any kind of over-advantage, that is what it is.
And, and that was, that's something we could have done under home rule, right?
Possibly, but, but I was looking.
We could have had, we could have made an ordinance that.
Regardless of that. So I was just looking at it because, because it looked to me like you could make it an infraction and then after that first infraction, then it would roll to a B misdemeanor. So you could just do a fine thing. But it's essentially what we're doing now anyway. But it's.
I've been told by several commissioners that they thought it was just gonna be an infraction. They didn't think there was gonna be any ramifications of it.
Well, and I, 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 I told you that. I misunderstood, I misunderstood the ramifications. I mean, in, in all honesty though, as long as you don't, it's still an infraction technically because of the deferred imposition. But the, the question I had in this situation is specifically for your situation and like, like the flax. You know, even if we, even if we do a burn ban in the future and we say high and below you can burn, there might not be a day that you can get higher or below and you still have to get that burnt off. So is there, is there a portion of the burn ban maybe we can add that would say, and I, this is where we got the, we have the fire chief sitting in the room, where we could put something in there that says something to the effect of on a day where the burn ban would be in place, but a controlled burn has to occur, that they can work with the rural fire department or something to make sure that it can occur. And if you get pre-approval or something of that nature.
And that would.
When it would be something with like flax straws, something that has to get off the field.
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying. You know, and we kind of crossed this road earlier, when this whole thing started, you know, about, well, maybe we'll write permits for certain people and, you know, this, that, or the other thing. I don't have time to write that many permits.
That was my question.
But number two, if I write you a permit or say, hey, go, in your case, go burn your flax straw. But then the wind does pick up and then it burns down your neighbor's house or whatever, that, that's not on you. I told you to go like that. You know, that, that comes back to me. And I, I won't have that.
My suggestion was you guys put the permits out and you make us prove that we have liability insurance. And then if we wanna burn on five sections, you charge us twenty-five bucks a section just to for monitoring, to cover expenses, whatever. You know, for what we put in the ground every day, it don't mean that's like buying lunch, you know? I mean, some way of making this work. So I, it, I can't go and tie up a fire department for a day with a fire truck sitting out there watching me burn flax straw. That's not right.
I'm not, I'm not saying that that's what I'm saying you should do. I'm just saying that if it was something where you could tell them so that they would know and they would have burned it or something, you know, they wouldn't sit out there with you. They would just know that you're doing it right.
Yeah, but I, I think the county should be the one that sells the permit if we're in, you know, if you go down that road.
Well, if it's something we can do. I mean, I don't even know if it's something we can or can't do, so.
You know, I mean, if we can come in here and go to the auditor's office and buy a burn permit and write down the sections and show proof of insurance and then it's on us? It's not on.
I mean, that's a, you know, really, that's a reasonable idea. This is just my thought right off my head here. What do you say this? So that's, that's a good theory, but then what happens to the guy that doesn't go buy the permit?
Then you go hit him with this class B misdemeanor.
You know, then, you know, I mean, if that's the route that everybody went to travel, which whatever, I mean, if, if county wants to dish out bird permits or, you know, if they can, if that's even a, a, a feasible deal. If they go and do that and then you don't come and get a permit for the, the, you know, whatever, the section you're burning or the quarter that you're burning or whatever, you know, then, then what? You know, it's not, that's the question that I would have.
Yeah, I think farmers are gonna be pretty, you know what, I, I'm gonna be pretty responsible about that. Because I don't want the liability or something all wrong.
Right.
Cause then I'll be doing a lot more than, you know, starting to do it now.
Absolutely.
But I was in a situation where it's.
It's not an easy thing. It's, it's not easy.
I, I just don't.
Thirty of March, we had to deal with a burn ban.
Huh?
The thirty of March, we had to deal with a burn ban of the commission. You know, no moisture all winter. I mean, we're looking at cattail slews after cattail slews. They're just a bonfire. I mean, they're just poosh.
Yeah, and we were having.
If you don't get thirty, forty feet away immediately, I mean, it's a fire burn on your arms or your face or whatever. They get that hot that quick.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I, I just throwing some history out here on why we had to make a decision and try to control it somewhat.
Yeah.
Because it was happening before people were actually going on point. A lot of this was just someone sitting outside and so we were.
We need to get through this. We need to work together. And we all think the high standard is working.
I think, I, I think you need to be better with the high and low things and, and, and maybe better with helping us get that information. I, I don't know how to quite explain that, but a lot of guys just have a flip phone and, well, I don't know this stuff.
I gotta grab a new phone. I can't work.
You know what I mean?
Wouldn't it be helpful if we like went and talked to N D T C and, and it had, saw if they could add that to their, what is it, six, six, two, one thousand or whatever that number is?
Yeah.
Something to that.
No, I just, I, I think just do your high and low things and, and let the chips fall where they may. And then if it gets away on the guy, we, we have insurance for this and we'll, we'll face the music when we, when we do something bad. I, I mean, that's all you can do at that point. Um, I don't think anybody's house has been burned down from burning cattail slews. Is that there?
Not in our district.
Not in our district.
It has happened.
That's a good answer. I like that. It, it can happen.
It can happen, yeah.
You know, some.
We're not running around throwing matches out and there's.
In Benson County, yeah, yeah.
I'm not here, but Benson County.
Well, you got, you got over there that.
But I, I, I know, I like your high and low things. I think it just needs to be monitored better.
You, you, you need the information more readily is what you're getting.
Yeah, and I think.
Something like maybe if we talked to the radio station and.
Well, not only that, to be, call up ten guys and say, hey, you know what? I mean, you're seeing fires every day. I mean, you've seen it yourself. And like I said, I went to South Dakota. I never lost sight of a smoke for two hundred miles. I mean, it's.
I would, well, we've seen, yeah, I have too. I've seen fires every day all over the county. No matter which way you go.
Don't know matter which way you go.
People use common sense. You know, they maybe wait till three, four, five o'clock to light it, wind dying down. Now it'll work. I mean, high category. You probably started out in severe or whatever.
I think your category is fine. It just needs to be put in place a little better. I'd like to see something more up to Chris, updated twice a day this time of year and in the fall or something.
Good point. Good point.
I guess, I, I'd hate to put more on your shoulders, Chris, but.
Well, the, the burn ban is issued once a day. Or the, the, the index, excuse me, is, is issued once a day. It's on Facebook.
Right.
And it's up to the responsibility of if you're gonna go burn, that's your responsibility to make sure that you have made all your i's are dotted, t's are crossed, that, hey, I went to the website. I figured the information. I am safe to burn.
I understand that, but like, like Ed just said, conditions change throughout the day, you know? You get to four, five o'clock, the wind goes down, the humidity comes up, the temperatures go down. Your fire index has completely now changed.
Common sense. Right, you know, the day.
But, but because this map came out at six AM, right, Chris? This, this map came out at six AM. Now at, from six PM to ten PM, I've got an opportunity to run around and get some work done, get some of these slews burnt, get some flax straws burnt. But because the map was put out at six AM, now that option has been completely taken away from me. If, if somehow we had an option where it was up a local where it was updated twice a day or something.
No, that would be the other one, going to match in and run. You know, that's, that's what you have.
Let's do that six.
Well, that, that's what we had. And, and that wasn't what we were attempting to do.
No.
And why we need to do something different as a county or to have a different map. Let's have our own map.
Yes.
Have your own map.
That's fine, but then what parameters do we use to, and, and this is not, I understand that you guys are saying county commission figured it out. I'm bringing this up to my colleagues and just saying to the room in general. What parameters do we use? One of the fears that I have, and I think that, that, you know, Chris does his best to, to treat everyone the same. But I could foresee a situation then where Cole calls and says, I really need to get into the field and burn today. So how about we update today? And then Farmer John calls the next day and it's very similar conditions and maybe Chris doesn't like him as much. Nope, we're not gonna change it. I, I don't want that kind of, of arbitrary capacity.
Well, I think you can, you can talk to.
No, it's arbitrary. It's not going out at six and going out at noon.
I think you can talk to your, your fire, you know, all the fire chiefs and the, and you can come up. I mean, if, if your humidity is getting below forty percent and that's what you decide is one of the parameters, if your wind is above twenty miles an hour, you can set that as part of your parameters. I mean, as the commission and the fire chiefs, I mean, have the conversation. I, I, I don't pretend to know all the answers, but I think it's worth having a conversation over.
I, I think by, by changing things periodically throughout the day becomes inconsistent. And then deputies don't know what to enforce and what not to enforce, when to enforce it.
Well, the deputies have to look at the same map we do. We got, we got guys saying that.
So can I, can I ask a different question? Just as, as a, as a natural logical outcome of this, changing it twice a day? So let's say that we start in a high category at the start of the day and you go light a match. And at twelve oh one PM, the winds picked up, that fire is still raging. And now the deputy shows up. You think people won't be angry about getting a, a B misdemeanor because their fire was burning at eleven AM and it's still burning and now it's high?
Common sense. Do some common sense.
It's a legitimate question, Lucas, but I mean, it's, I think we've all, in the conversations I've had with all of you, the conversations I've had with you this morning, Steve. I, I don't think we're ever gonna come up with a, a perfect system. I mean, I think everybody's in agreement on that.
We, we know that.
You know?
You sit in this chair long enough, you know that.
Go ahead.
I think you need to back up here a little bit and look at the whole general thing. I see what you're saying about flax straw and stuff. But you're talking about a twenty-four hour period here. It ain't the end of the world. It really ain't. I mean, if you, they do have forecasts on that website. Along with the map, it says two, three days out, what they're projecting. If you go start doing twelve hours at a time, somebody's gonna want six hours at a time. And then you got a total fucking mess. If you can't back up and look at that forecast in a twenty-four hour period and then a three-day forecast that says they're projecting this three days from now and, and and, and do your burning on that day, it may screw your schedule up, but we're talking about twenty-four hours.
Oh.
When, seriously, I mean, I understand where you're coming from. I did farm.
Yeah.
What I'm saying, you're, you know, I'm farming down here and I'm gonna be going, I've got flax up north of there. And when I get there, I need that ground ready, cause I've got plant dates set on me. And so there's gotta be. Are you, is that all in Ramsey County?
Yes.
Okay.
And I've got some in Benson County and I've got some in Towner County.
Okay, well.
But my Ramsey County, all my flax is up there and I'm down here, getting down here. And when I get up there, I wanna be able to keep moving.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is you want your cake and eat it too. And that's not gonna happen.
No, I understand what I'm saying. I'm saying that you, you can't just plan two days in advance that, oh, I'm gonna, I'll burn them today. Cause I won't, I'm down here. I need it ready when I get there.
I understand that.
Cause I got a plant date that, that might be putting corn in, which is the twenty-fifth. I might not have that twenty-four hours, is what I'm saying.
I will agree to disagree with you on that.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, there's.
Well, what I'm saying is you, if you're gonna start this twelve-hour stuff, it's gonna be a pop. Any model just shut it all down?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause we're not, I understand the work part of it and the agricultural part of it. But I'm not always gonna shut my shore up door and lock it because you need to burn. And I will do that. And I will do that.
Oh, right. I know that.
Part of the, part, part. I do because I signed up.
Yeah, but I mean, you don't wanna have, I don't want you to have to either.
But, you know, the other part of this is cutting down fire departments' exposure to hazards.
Yeah.
Put trucks on the road. Okay? Last week when the weather service called the fire in because it was red flag, I think. It wasn't just extreme.
Red flag.
It went up, it burnt fifteen minutes, ten minutes. It was before we got there, it's burnt off. Okay? No harm, no foul. I don't know. We had three, we had two trucks on the road.
Three trucks.
Three trucks on the road. We got shut down. I was going back to the hall. Guy was over there lifting one up. A quarter mile from the fire truck and the deputy sitting on the road. And he had the same thing you do. He's gotta get it done. Okay? So when I got back to the hall, I put a brush truck on the road. And I got three, I've been in two trucks within fifteen minutes of each other and they both been on the road in a response mode. Maybe some dipshit pulls out in front of me and we have T-bone. Now I got a hundred and twenty thousand dollar fire truck that's in the deal because somebody had to burn. I'm not trying to be an ass. But what I'm saying is, I think there's enough people that do need to plan a couple of days ahead of time. And it's, whether, you know, and I under, if it rains this weekend, it'll all be in the wind. I mean, it's, it's an extreme situation we're dealing with and I.
I, I, it's, it's snow and rain two days before that Saturday and.
I, I think there's, I think there's two things we're talking about here. One, as we've said before, if we would have set it at high immediately, none of us would be sitting here having this discussion.
Right.
And we, and we recognize that. We made the adjustment. We admitted that we should have made the change and we made it wrong and we made the change.
And, and I, I think that's the only change.
And, and the flexibility is there now. I, I bet you, I, I haven't kept track, but seventy-five percent plus of the days where we have the ability to burn.
Ten days out of the last fifteen.
Yep. Ten days. So yeah, but sixty, two-thirds, sixty-six. Yeah, that's, that's a pretty good ratio.
The high changed everything.
Yes, and, and we, we admitted that. We made the change because we, we, we didn't do it right the first time. The second thing is the twelve versus twenty-four hours. I, I struggle with it simply because we already have a hard enough time getting people to look up the website once a day to make sure they make their decision properly. Let alone if we start to put in twice a day, three times a day, whatever, you know? We can't, like you said, we can't make a perfect system.
It's, it's, it doesn't happen often, but I've seen it, uh, maybe twice since this burn ban started in Ramsey County where that map actually switched throughout the day for the, for the better, you know? That was back when we were only in moderate and low. And it went from moderate to high like midday. And then one time it came from high and went down to moderate one time. Doesn't happen.
That map does change during the day.
It, it will change if the conditions change drastically enough for them to warrant changing it.
That, and there are occurrences where they will stick a red flag on in the middle of the day. That's not a six AM when all of a sudden the winds pick up and then they say.
Yesterday, yesterday, the flag got put on there from two to eight, I think it was.
Yeah, they'll stick it on.
I understood when it was set at six AM. That's the way it was all day.
That, that map will change. And it, it says that on the website there. It said.
I learned something there, too.
I understood it the same way you did until watching it. I've been watching it daily.
I put on, yeah.
I'm just didn't know.
So that problem is taking care of itself that you're changing. Well, okay, I didn't know that was the case at all. Chris, you knew that?
I I actually did not completely know that without a drastic change. If it was a drastic change, then whether I knew that they would update if it was a drastic change.
Like from low to extreme or what?
Um, so like a cold front or something would come through and bring in a bunch of moisture, they would update it. I knew that. But we haven't really had any of those days that I can that I can recall.
No, I think the one day, the the one day that I can remember that it did change was um, all of a sudden the humidity shot up to you know.
The hell was a twelve hour idea then?
Forty. You know, I mean, it does.
We don't need it.
It it does change if the conditions weren't a change.
It was a big help when they started talking about on radio, you know, when they when they were talking. You know, it was extreme, you know, and that and they were hitting that, maybe not every hour, but you know, that's what I really noticed the change about, you know, you can look out and see less smoke, if you will. That really helps when there, you know, because Kurt McHale said, you know, at six fifteen, only beyond it was, you know.
Maybe maybe one of the things we can ask radio works to include within their weather with that they do every half hour on all their stations would be include what that fire index is for the day. Um, and they do have four stations, whether you're listening to one or or the other. The the one problem I could see with that and probably what happened very often during the day is sometimes they do um, voice track their their segments and they're not actual live. But what they do following that is generally somebody reading the current conditions, you know. You know, so that one individual is over all four stations. Um, so that would be something we could certainly ask them to do and include in within their
That would be a big help.
Their weather.
That would be a big help. I've heard it.
Jeff, can I make a recommendation too on that?
Absolutely.
What about reverse nine one one? Have people sign up for it?
Um.
That's a good question.
Can it be that isolated to include whatever individuals?
What, you have to do the whole county?
Well, that's just it.
Well, you could have farmers sign up. I mean, if.
But that could be a pretty big rubble rubble back there, but that's a huge group. If you've got one farmer.
There's a approximately a hundred farmers in Ramsey County.
Why can't we just set up an automated line that people can call or talk to? I mean, that doesn't seem very hard.
I don't think so. Could it be something is, granted, this is for broad range discussion, but something as simple as and I don't, you know, we got guys with flip phones, but most people can get text messages. You know, if you can put together a text message list and and Chris can push it out.
Well, that's that's a great.
That's a reverse nine one one.
I know, but I'm saying that way we don't have to burden the law enforcement center with it because there's a whole bunch of stuff the law enforcement center has to take care of already. We don't wanna throw on top of them if we don't have to. We'll throw it on Chris instead. I'm just saying, this is, these are good discussions to have, not necessarily for today, but long term so we can fix it so it's better in the future for everybody.
There is other, there is other fire departments in the state that have set up different hotlines like you were just talking about. You know, you call into that, you report that you're having a controller burn. I haven't. I I've been trying to make contact with this guy to figure out how they're doing that because somehow it's getting relayed to them. Which right now the L E C is doing all of ours, you know, you call in, hey, I'm gonna burn this, this and this. You know, whatever, they call us and they tell us, okay. They have a hotline set up that tells them what the conditions are. And then you can leave a message saying, hey, I'm burning this right here. How that is getting back to the fire department itself, I'm not sure of yet. But that's not.
Something to work on.
Well, it's it, you know, maybe that's rather than you know, that's an avenue that a guy can look at, you know, there you can call this number, whatever that phone number is. Today, the conditions are this, no burning advised. Okay, today the conditions are this.
Please, please tell us where your burning section, whatever, and record.
I mean, that's that's no more, that's no more complicated than an answering machine, right? Instead of saying, this is Lucas Wakefield, you just say, the conditions today are this, if you need to leave a message and you've recorded, however many times a day. Maybe five times a day, you've rerecorded if it changed. Right? Right? I mean, that takes all of two minutes on our end. And you push that number out to all the farmers and everybody, even the flip phone guys can make a phone call. Well, that'd be one number you can put out to the public, they can call.
You can have a couple of different avenues, though.
Yeah, I like the radio. I've I've heard red flag days several times in Austin.
The radio's good.
The radio's, there's a couple of different options you can all put out at the same time to.
Oh, totally.
And I say, hey, guys, there's three, four things here. You can figure out what you need to do and whatever works best for you.
Whatever works best for you. Try to get as many options as you can do it.
Right now, the people are using, oh, I see smoke over there, there's smoke over there. I'm like, ooh, must be a dead person.
Well, that's exactly what's happening and then the deputies are out and they're required to follow their job duties and they're seeing smoke and they're responding to that smoke. And and so it just becomes a a real cluster at the end of the day.
It just got out of hand.
It it certainly did. And I I appreciate the discussion that we're having um, today. Um, a lot more productive um, than screaming at one another. Um, that becomes non-productive.
And it needs to happen. I know it was drier this spring, but I mean, there's times when it's been a wet spring, guys are burning and it gets away. I mean, it it happens every year and and it it needs to be done every year.
I'm kinda, I I'm just kinda surprised in all honesty because I was thinking about it since I've been on the commission six and a half years, we put on a burn ban, what? Three, four times by the end?
Not very often and it's usually later.
It's usually later in the season and I think that's the big difference is it's usually in the fall is when we've had to put it on and we haven't had to deal with the fact that it's been as dry as long as it has been and the fact we've been able to repaint replant croc- cropland.
Well, and and a burn ban isn't just about the farmers, right? It's about somebody not lighting a huge bonfire half a mile on a devil's land.
To be honest with you, there's been burn bans on before and we kinda just did our thing and nobody's really ever bothered us about it. You know, I mean, it's it's just the way it was, you know, so you you don't think of it, you know, it's like, oh, I guess there's a burn ban on us. That must be the Lakewood people. We're fine.
There is a bit of a difference though between a cattail slew and a plowed section and a bunch of campers all within fifteen feet of each other that have lawn sheds, four wheelers, golf carts, you know, whatever. There there is a different fire load there. There's a different aspect to that. So yeah, you're you're right. It doesn't just apply, it doesn't just apply to farmers. But there is a difference.
I totally agree there's a difference, but the county doesn't have the ability to say, don't go light a bonfire next to town, but the farmers can't. We don't have that.
No, no. Some lots, we can play a bonfire as a camper.
Do we wanna make any changes? Um, any recommendations from law enforcement, fire departments?
I think you have two cents there. Um, I think what you guys have done has been very good because when this whole, before this thing was implemented. Um, the deputy chief under Sean and we were running our butts off. I mean, it was, it was ridiculous. And since this has happened and everything has tamed down. And uh, I'm sure you guys are all familiar, but every one of us has another job. We don't sit there and wait for calls. You're taking people out of, what do you know what's called a telephone company and we got guys everywhere. We are, we we are and there is a lot of guys that are also farmers too. So I mean, I I'd like to thank you guys for what you've done. Unfortunately, there has been some individuals that have gotten in trouble. And I agree with them, the misdemeanor is probably a little harsh, but I mean, you know. You guys have done, I think you guys have done a good job. And it's helped us a lot too.
I agree with my deputy chief on that. I mean, the, thank you guys for your service. I can't thank you enough. The the high, I mean, I I can sit here, go through my phone. Sean definitely can go through the the book we have at Fire Off, but I mean, just going through the text messages that we get to go out and respond. It's not been nearly as bad since it went to high as it was at moderate. I I just, I can tell you that.
It sounds to me like we've got a couple of things we gotta deal with then. The high is working well.
Yes.
We need to work with the legislators to maybe talk about the fact that the B misdemeanor is a little bit harsh and maybe it should be a second offense type of thing. And maybe maybe it should be an infraction or a citation or fine for the first one and then you'll learn your lesson and then the second one rises to a misdemeanor or something. You know, we can work on something like that.
So we don't have to come back to this.
Yes, to maybe try to fix this a little so you you know, we're not turning guys for making a mistake into a criminal.
I agree with that completely.
So we we could work on something like that long term over two years. This legislature's not back in for a couple of years now. And on top of it then, you know, Dave's particular situation, maybe he can visit with the state's attorney and try to get something hammered out here.
Yeah, and and the thing here, you know, go back to Lee, I I did his point on planning. My point is I don't send my hired man out to do the burning. I do it myself. And I I it's hard to leave my other guys to go do that. We don't, you know. And I don't wanna just send a fifteen mil kit out.
Burn.
Dead water on down here. So that's what I mean. It's, I gotta have it ready when I get there and I gotta be the one who do it. And like today, for instance, I got one hired man is down in Fargo. Some serious issues again and the other hired man is out working by himself and we're trying to, we're shorthanded. And you can't get anybody to help because they're all in jail. On record. But I honestly.
No, and I understand where you're coming from. The point I I thought, I I guess I wanna make is two thirds of the days or more now, you have the ability to get a job.
It's gonna be better.
So so work work with the state's attorney and maybe you guys can get together because now you won't have to worry about the ninety days deferred imposition, all that. Hopefully you'll be able to have time to get the burning done you need to get done without the problem. Work with him. I'm sure they'll be, you know.
I'm happy to talk to you.
He's happy to talk to you, try to get it structured so we don't cause a problem for you.
Man, you guys really threw a loop at me with technology here. I was looking at the sky.
Well, and that's, that's on us. I mean, that's, we need to do a better job.
We have to do a better job getting the information off YouTube.
Talk to the to legislature. I mean, to me, that sounds like the two things that need to be done. We need to make sure that it is that easy to get the information on on what you can and can't do that day. And we probably need to change.
Well, let's be honest, let's just, let's hope it's never this dry again at this time of the year. This is the driest and the least, the least amount of precipitation.
I bet you that damn deal ever had. Twenty-eight years of cattails, I was ever getting, twenty-eight years.
I don't disagree with you.
Best fuel I've ever burnt in the spring.
And 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 I'll tell you, the planting has been fantastic. I'll I'll really admit that.
Before I come to town, John asked me, how long since you've seen it through the slew? That twenty-eight years.
Yes, I know.
I told him I seen a road out on township. It's been, I told him the other day, I said, I haven't seen that road for twenty years.
Twenty-eight.
No, I don't, I don't disagree. All I'm saying is January to April of this year is the least amount of precipitation we've ever gotten in a hundred and twenty-five years of record keeping. So we could've taken a half inch or inch of rain at some point in time and it would've leaped it all this garbage basically.
But we're probably getting into a dryer cycle and and this is going to continue and and we need to fix it.
It's it's all the, all the better why we need to hammer this up now.
Anyway.
It was in the eighties. It pretty much.
The last major drought was eighty-eight and eighty-nine followed and it was another super drought. So I mean, if if the cycle follows, we could easily have this problem again next spring, you know. Very easily.
Even if, even if we get some rain the next few days, it's not gonna solve that.
Somebody said I haven't seen this many fires lately. Well, they're all burnt. Everybody's got them all done.
It basically is gonna come down to communication.
Yes.
With everybody. I mean, and I I as much fault to communicating as anybody, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I I am too.
That's, you just, you don't think of it, you know, it's just something we've always did and you go out and do it and.
I think we finally found the right bracket to be in high.
Yeah, yeah, I think you just need to be in high and and let the chips fall where they may and and some guys are gonna be out there and be reckless and not many. I don't think there's a big problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think you're, you're there now.
I think you're there. Just a little more information and few more sites to help guys with and we'll be fine. I mean.
Well.
So like you said, for me, it's water, the bread.
It hasn't been, you know, it certainly wasn't an easy thing to do because we know how important that is to production and culture. Um, so getting rid of that debris in your fields and that's the easiest way to do it.
It's the only way you can do it. There's nothing you can do with cattails and burn them. There is.
And and we wanna certainly appreciate our fire department and our volunteers. We understand and know that you guys have other jobs that you're out there doing. And the last thing that we wanna do is send you on on a bunch of calls that you're not needed and risk life, limb and property and responding to that incident. So wanna thank everybody. I don't know if we're gonna be doing any.
You don't have to. You 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 know, you know what else you done. Thanks, guys.
Again, thank you.
It was a really good discussion. Thank you.
Really big discussion. Thank you. Both of you guys. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you all for uh, sitting through the agenda that were part of that discussion and uh, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, John. So Roger will uh, hammer you out real quick if you if somebody has anything else.
Don't wait to get back.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. Unless you have anything you wanna.
I just, I just want the commission with all that. We're gonna do what you guys dictate.
Yep.
And and I think in the long run, what we did went a long ways to getting people's eyes open about this burning issue. And you know, but you know what? I think it's some home, hey, wait a minute, I can't do this. Without some repercussion. And yes, a few got thrown under the bus. But that's the way the system worked. It wasn't nothing to do with nobody doing anything wrong. It's just the way the system works. But you know, you guys can't put out an issue without being enforced, in my opinion. Otherwise, it's no good for even issuing it. And if we don't follow through with what you guys, our wishes are and your orders are.
And we appreciate your consistency.
Any good.
We we appreciate you and your deputies' consistency.
Well, that was our goal, let's be consistent and and be fair. And I just want you guys to know my side of how I took this was, you know, we need to do what you guys are directing us to do. Period.
And and I I'm not trying to, I I don't think anybody's trying to blame you for doing, you have to endorse because that's, but the the thing that I struggled with was the inflexibility, but the inflexibility was there because of the fact that we should've set it at high right away. We we put you guys in a bad situation having to go out and enforce something when it just wasn't what was right. Because we we were learning and we knew there was gonna be some hiccups in this and it sounds like we've gotten to a point where we're at least
But even if, even if you would've looked at it very high, I think you would have the burners.
Well, we still would have some. I don't, I don't.
But I still think that lesson needs to be sent, that message needs to be sent that, you know, we need business and we're gonna do it and uh, you know. And I think that it, you know, this year, next year, it's gonna help. Because now more people are gonna think and maybe look ahead and say, wait a minute.
It's helped people get educated, no different.
Well, it helped me get educated, but this is part of that education also was what happened this spring. It was like, okay, you went, oh, Derek, I'm gonna come out here and I'm gonna get a letter in the mail. And so maybe I should think like, oh, that's all it takes, think twice. You know, some have common sense, a lot of them, most ninety-nine, but there's the ones that don't.
And there's always gonna be change panels.
And they're always gonna be there.
I honestly, I think that's what we're seeing more than anything.
I just want you guys to know where I stood on this, that, you know, we're supporting your decisions a hundred and fifty percent, you know, and that's, that's my job.
Well, and that that's the other aspect of it is that it's our decision. The the five of us, not any individual can make that and none of us did. And and so that's why I put this on the agenda for tonight for discussion. Because I know individually we were getting hit and uh, that needed to be brought to all of us.
The only, the only point I wanna make is Steve's not supposed to enforce our decisions when it's a bad decision.
Oh, okay.
We're supposed to cover it here, man, come on.
It would be a great light to sit and make that, you know.
Come on, man. Come on, man.
Ooh.
I think the blame is much taken. We just, we were, we were learning as we went and we knew there was gonna be pain and this is what we were saw here tonight. Now we're.
We weren't going hollering ass loud and doing all that. We were not. We were responding to fires that we got called on. We were responding to fire, fires that people called in. There was a few that we, that were so huge that we saw that we went to. But, you know, those are the ones you had to go to. I mean, I can see the smoke from fifteen miles away. That's not a little half acre smoke burn in the middle of a field.
Twenty-eight years of cattails.
That's where I'm at. Absolutely.
A lot of them, I know that.
Anyway, I just want you guys to know my side and all that. We're, I'm here to support you guys and do your.
But you're doing your job. The directive was what the directive was.
And that's what we did. We did what we're supposed to do.
Well, we appreciate that. I mean.
And that's what we're here for.
If we had to change it.
Yeah, and then once you change it, we're fine with that. I don't care what you put, we'll, we'll do whatever. Once you change it, we adjust it. I told the guy, hey, now we're done until, you know, until we get to this level. And, uh, you know, that's where we, you know, we're just gonna follow through with whatever your mandates or take our, uh, what else, you know, what you call it.
Decisions.
Decisions. One thing I might add to the comments is, uh, as far as this deputy calling him for advice that, I mean, I tell my guys the same thing. If you're not sure of the decision.
Call me.
Call me.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
And, and the reason he called me, because he was told that the fire department was standing by waiting for him to call them out. Which was not true, but that's what he thought. It had nothing to do with whether he was gonna do it, but anyway, that's here, here and there.
Well, and things get lost in communication.
They do, but, and I, there, there was no sense. I just, you know. But that, that is there, especially at young veterans. My message to them is, you don't know, call me.
Yeah.
Well, I don't care what time of day or night, call me and, and I'll answer the phone and we'll talk you through it.
You can let leaders.
Well, let's, let's move on. We expect, we don't have too much time on this.
You're not bringing us something to debate for now.
Looks like you just want to spend some money.
So Roger has, uh, we have a bid to discuss on the asbestos, asbestos removal of the doorway down in the, by the historical room. Or we're gonna create a new entrance for that meeting room for social service visitations. And we need to go ahead and approve that. Um, forty-nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Roger, if you have anything you'd like to add, otherwise we will.
Yeah, just, I guess the other two, um, companies that had done work for us before, they're both basically shutting down. So I finally did find this outfit out of, made it all that, uh, so.
So the forty-nine fourteen is just for asbestos removal then?
Well.
Doorway. Yeah, they'll cut the doorway from now.
Yeah.
What, what, what are these then?
Okay, that's, that's the rest of the wall and putting a new door in and.
So we're gonna approve each other separately, I assume.
You need all three contractors?
Well, no. Just asbestos one.
Just, just this, just this one first, the, the slat. Yeah.
So what you want?
If you're comfortable with that.
Someone like to get?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the, uh, bid for the Sletton builders for removal of the asbestos down in the asbestos or the historical room. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That bid is approved.
Okay. Now, we got two estimates for building of the wall and the putting in of the door. The, the doorway has been cut. There'll be construction for seventy-one sixty-one and attachment builders for sixty-four hundred.
See any reason not to accept a little bit?
I see no reason not to accept a little bit. I've never worked with him, but I know he's been around for a long time. Okay, so.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second to approve the low bid, uh, for the attachment builders, sixty-four hundred dollars. Any further discussion?
The only question I would have is how, how quickly are we getting this done?
Well, the, uh, asbestos could potentially be done next Friday, Saturday, uh, the twenty-nine thirtieth. They were waiting to hear about what happens tonight, if it's approved or not. And he said that he was pretty sure he could get that done Memorial Day weekend. Now, the carpenter, I really do not know, but hopefully that could be done in a timely manner also.
I, I was just asking the question because on the one bid he does have that, you know, they might have to move the bid price up from interiors. But if we gave him a go ahead now, I would assume that the, the price is gonna stay very similar, so. Just so, just so it doesn't all of a sudden go up seven hundred bucks or whatever, all of a sudden, technically, something a little bit.
And, you know, realistically, all they're working with is sheet rock and, and steel studs. So I, you know, it's not like it's lumber which can skyrocket.
I'm fine. Just to ask the question.
Yeah. Any further discussion? We have a motion, a second, uh, to approve the low bid for attachment builders, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, anything else, Roger?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Johnson. Rob, how are you doing?
Good.
Thank you for sitting through. Appreciate you being here. Um, I asked you to come in, uh, joint powers agreement. Law enforcement center, um, is updating their joint powers agreement with their entities. Uh, what is it? The five political subdivisions of Ramsey, Nelson, Benson, Eddie, Conys and the city of Devils Lake. And, uh, do we have any questions regarding that?
Well, then real quick, I'll just kind of update where we're at on this is we wanted to get it out so now that we can get input and feedback from the, the different entities. As far as what they like in it, what they don't like, recommendations on changes, uh, questions that they might have. Um, I've already actually been notified that Benson County actually thought that they were approving it, so they approved, uh, agreeing to this.
Good.
So, uh, as far, I, I, I happen to know that the city of Devils Lake hasn't even discussed it in their meetings yet. So when we have our meeting tomorrow morning to go over this, I don't know what to expect, but. No, it's right now, we're just trying to get input and feedback. We've spent a good amount of time, you know, over the last year, really trying to get this into a place where we're comfortable with it, working with the board. Uh, my fingerprints are really all over this thing, so I, I tried to stay as objective as I could in giving some guidance to our attorney in, in developing it. Um, but I think, you know, it's open for discussion. Is this the way that it's gonna be when we, when it's signed? I absolutely believe there's no way. I think there's, there's gonna be a lot of things that are gonna come up from some entities that are gonna ask for some changes in some areas. So.
Really?
So I, I advise the commissioner, Rob, I read through it. I thought it's a pretty county-friendly agreement. As far as we're concerned, and I can't speak for them as far as what they're gonna do. There was a question about if you were to take the building and turn it upside down and shake it out, who owns what when it falls out? Is that defined in here? Is that something we can consider?
So that's where I think a lot of the discussion is really gonna go yet. There, we need to establish an agreement between Ramsey County, the city of Devils Lake and the LAC over this, specifically the physical plant. There's also gonna be the argument of who owns what at this point. Cause the original agreement is gonna be that the city and the county own the main building and the property it's on. But what about the additional assets that have been collected by the LAC over the years since then? I think there's gonna be argument and discussion over who owns what there, cause it's not clearly defined.
So you have to be determined, is what you're saying?
Right. And as far as that, that agreement, it's something that, you know, it hasn't really been initiated, but something, and I don't know what the process needs to be for that to get the city and the county together to work with us and, and the LAC as far as a lease agreement. Identify who owns what, you know, who owns what, uh, who's gonna be responsible for what, how are those things gonna be approved? Uh, cause the, the original agreements, the current ones that we're acting under refer back to the nineteen seventy-three original agreement where the city and the county have to approve any capital expenditures before the board can actually consider those. So it's, it's kind of in my interpretation of that, that we have a commission that's made up of commissioners from those boards. And by them approving it, we're kind of in de facto.
The county is signing off because our commissioners are saying, yes.
Yeah, because we represent, we, we sent those commissioners as representatives of the body as a whole.
Right. So I, I, I think you can argue both, argue both ways on that, so.
Yeah, and I think that's, that was my main question last night and you represented it very well. It was just the question of in the past, we've had kind of an amorphous agreement in terms of, okay, when we needed to do something like put the camera system in, who was gonna be in charge of paying for it? We just kind of hammered it out. Now, if we stipulate specifically in an agreement going forward that the city and the county own the physical plant, is that gonna preclude the other entities from also helping out on certain things again? Physical plant versus, you know, flip the building upside down, shake it out, what counts as a fixed asset versus a, you know, to the building versus a non-fixed asset? You know, cause if it could be stripped from the building, it can be sold. So then who's gonna be in charge of paying for those things?
Right.
Long-term. I mean, stuff like the parking lot or something? If that's gonna be a physical asset to the building and attributable to it, but something like a boiler or something, you know, there's gotta be. And, and I know those are defined under auditing guidelines and things like that, but I just, I think that agreement as a whole looks really good. It's just gonna be a matter of hammering out those things on how, I mean, it'd need flexibility too, just because the board could make determinations at the time when it's occurring. But we just have to have some guidance long-term so we know kind of what we're getting into.
And, and that might have to be a separate agreement between the county and the city about, here's how we handle this, you know?
I would agree with you there.
I take the first six, you take the other half of the dozen kind of thing.
Yeah.
I don't know if that needs to go into this agreement.
The only time that that would ever be relevant is in the case of dissolution of the law enforcement center rivalry.
Who owns the physical assets that aren't the building?
Well, right, but, but that's, that's the only time it would ever be relevant, right? So then could you make the argument that all the phys, like all of the pick-upable assets, the pens and everything, right? Are owned by the law enforcement center and all you would ever actually need to do is define sort of the buy-in share that each entity has. And then the proceeds in the case of the dissolution of the LAC of all the sale of those assets would be divided up.
Liquidated, given the share.
Amongst whatever share portion they have. That's the way it would work if it were a, an LAC or something.
Yes, I, I agree with where you're coming from, but my point is that something like the camera project, if we're saying that that's a physical asset that's attached to the building, then at that point, the agreement and structure in front of us is essentially saying that Ramsey County and the city of Devils Lake are responsible for all of that.
Right.
And not the other entities, where in the past, the other entities have agreed to help pay for those things. So long-term, we need to know, at least within a reasonable concept, what is going to be our long-term liability in terms of improvements on the building versus, you know, stuff like pens, stuff like, things like that. I mean, that's, that's obviously reasonable that it's gonna be owned as a, as the LAC as a whole. But I, I just wanna know exactly what we would be on the hook for in the future. You know, cause in the past, if we wanted to repaint the parking lot, everybody would have chipped in. Well, if it's gonna be just the city of Devils Lake and Ramsey County, we need to know that. Because it's gonna, it's gonna increase our exposure in terms of cost, long-term. I mean, cause this, this, this is gonna go for perpetuity until we make a change, so.
The other one did.
Yeah, so, but we haven't agreed, we haven't switched anything since seventy-three. That's ten years before I was born.
And we did things different. We've done things different.
Yes.
We did it.
I think we have.
The camera and the intercom system was different.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm saying. We just have to have some type of a, it, it, it doesn't have to be this, 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 this. But there has to at least be some type of parameters on who's gonna pay for what reasonably or at least to say that the board has the capability to ask for that chicken, essentially.
Keyword.
Yes.
The board.
Yeah.
That's where the people are coming together, that are running the law enforcement center and making agreements. And the camera and the intercom system, everybody understood what we were getting into.
And their necessary requirements to perform the operation of.
We wouldn't have seen another federal prisoner until we seen them.
No, but I agree with you. I've been on board with every improvement we've ever made. My question is, is what happens if we get to a point where this agreement's in place and essentially says Ramsey County and the city of Devils Lake are in, in charge of those things and pay for those things? And we have other outside entities that decide that we're not on the hook for it. We don't have to pay for it.
You don't do that?
Well, and that's, exactly. And that's, that's the point I'm running about getting to is that at that point, then does the board have the discretion to say, you guys are paying seventy-five dollars a day, but since you're not paying for any physical plant improvements, we're gonna charge you one oh five oh eight or whatever?
Okay.
That, all I'm saying is I want the flexibility in the agreement to be able to function long-term.
You want something like that in there?
Not necessarily, but I, I just think it's something that needs to be discussed at the PLEC board, because I'm sure it's going to be.
Right.
Cause everybody's got these thoughts in their head. It's not just me looking.
What was the camera system? About little over eight hundred thousand?
Yeah, it's just over eight hundred thousand.
We thought it was maybe about five fifty or six?
Yeah, five hundred, five fifty.
With a couple hundred over and the other entity didn't hesitate at all.
But they didn't. They were really good. And, and we've had a really good working relationship overall for the last little bit. Now that we've had the things get on the right track, but.
I really don't think we want to make a lot of changes in this agreement. From seventy-three, but this one, thirty days now.
Overall, for, you know, fifty years almost.
Well, and, and you talk, you bring up a good point, uh, too, because, I mean, I'm gonna be questioning here coming up very soon for, you know, we're gonna start getting numbers as far as doing expansion. We need to do physical plant expansion. Our food service costs have gone up over fifty-one percent just in the last year. Uh, based off of what we have in one bid for our food contractor and, and the fact that we have it come in, you know, that it's basically catered into us. Uh, I, I was talking about it at our correctional administrators association meeting and Andy Frobe, who's the administrator for Cass County, when I was talking to him about how much our food service costs are per year now, his average daily population is two hundred and eighty and he'll pay more than a hundred thousand dollars less per year in food service costs than we do. So, and, and that means we need to get a kitchen, because we have to reduce our food service costs. Cause we're paying way too, we're paying just as much in food service costs as we are for healthcare benefits for our employees. So there's, there's physical plant needs in that aspect to try and help us save some money and be more efficient. But then there's also the fact that we're, you know, we're out of space. PD needs more space. Sheriff's office can use more space. So there, there's some things that we're gonna be having someone come in, take a look, give us an idea and then we can come back to the board with some numbers, so.
Yeah.
But then now who's gonna be on the hook for it? You know, or what is the process gonna be for getting approval for that? You know, then who's gonna own? You know, there's, there's all that stuff that's gonna be a part of that.
Well, I think the LAC has operated very well under that existing LAC board. And I think, you know, as representatives on there, we have, we're given that authority to act on behalf of the, the commission on that.
No, and I, I agree with you completely. I'm, I'm just looking, I'm just thinking long-term, if, you know, this agreement's gonna be out there in perpetuity, so just to make sure that we don't give ourselves any tripwires we can fall over in ten or fifteen years or something like that. Like I said, I think the agreement as a whole, in terms of all of the delineations and stuff, I think it's really, really good. I think it's much, it's, it's very, very, uh, comprehensive. It has all the information we need. I just wanna make sure that we cover our bases basically and, and give the board the ability to function and make those decisions and, and we can, you know, on top of the fact that, you know, we might have other entities at some point in time that might come to us and, and look for, you know, additional services or whatever, and then have them also, uh, share in the, in the cost of making sure that the facility runs well.
Is there changes that you would like to see made to this existing or this draft document before we?
No, not specifically this. I just think it's, I think it's gonna, I think in all honesty, it's gonna come more down to the side agreement between us and the city of Devils Lake. And I think that's where I think we're gonna have to hammer out those details, because this basically states that the board will have the discretion to, to capital improvements, things like that. And I think that's all we need in there on this. But I think that's where the, we're really gonna get down to the nuts and bolts of it is us, between us and the city and how we're gonna handle those things going forward.
We should start that process.
Yes, I think we should. And I understand that we've been working on this, one thing at a time, basically, but I think that's something we're gonna, that's where we're gonna have to hammer out.
You're on the right page. You know, double that.
Other than that, are we looking for an initial? Other than that, are we looking for an initial recommend or an initial uh motion to accept this right now?
No, I I think right now, it's just giving guidance to your representatives to come back to the commission tomorrow to say, you know, here are the things that we want to discuss or or look at our change. And I think we'll talk pretty extensively about the the need for that side agreement and how that will impact us. Um, so I I don't know that there's any action required, we just wanted to give opportunity for everyone to review it, come back with some feedback and input, so we know if we need to be looking at changes or or what the the plan is.
Can can I ask you two questions? What is the average jail population on a given day, about a hundred, right?
No, uh, we've been, so through the first quarter or first third of this year, it was around eighty-six, eighty-seven.
And and of those eighty-seven individuals, average, how many are Ramsey County's financial responsibility?
So, for the same timeframe.
Yeah.
Uh, this year's been forty-seven.
About.
So, give me a sec, because I have to clarify, it's been forty-seven, but seven of those on the average daily population side have been people that have been billed full to the state, waiting to go to the pen. So your actual number is probably closer to forty, uh, and I believe for this year, we budgeted an average daily population of Ramsey County at, I don't know, thirty-eight. I've actually got the numbers ready for the commission meeting tomorrow.
You you have a very good break in the meeting for tomorrow.
Yeah.
We usually end up being, what, around forty percent, forty to forty-five, depends on the year, something like that?
But the marshals have really helped offset that now.
Yeah, give or take, long term, we're always in that forty to fifty range of the of the cost. And then Devils Lake and Ramsey County is usually second, and then Devils Lake.
Pedros are about one or twenty-five?
Uh, we're at twenty-five right now on the. So we've been, we we've been sitting eighteen, nineteen, but we've we've received some more here recently. The only other comment that I have, and I just wanted to uh allow, expand on something that Adam had indicated, is, you know, I really believe that in the next ten years, we're going to see more regionalization, we're going to see more entities coming in. And so if, keep in mind, this is just for the LEC and the jail, we will be doing a separate agreement for nine-one-one, just just to provide that opportunity for entities to come in under one of those instead of needing to come in for both. So it it'll provide, I think, more opportunities for us that way, especially on the nine-one-one side.
Okay, so we could add, possibly add entities to one, one portion of the facility or the other with a portion of the cost.
Right, right, right.
Makes sense. But also make it easier for them to leave.
Right.
I've read it.
But.
Whatever.
But I think, I think, you know, and I know Adam brought this up in here against the last meeting, as far as when they do leave, I think we did a good job in defining the financial commitment that they have, that they're committed to for that process. To make sure we don't get huddled to drive.
Yeah, and that, I think that was the main thing, is is we we still have to allow each individual entity in their board, those decision-making processes on what's best for their community when it comes to nine-one-one or jail services, but at the same time, we can't hang ourselves with. Somebody leaving in the end of the year, if they give us, you know, reasonable timeframe, which is March thirty-first or.
Yeah, yeah, March thirty-first.
Yeah, then then at least we have time to plan accordingly for the budgeting for next year, and I think that's reasonable. Plus, we're making sure people pay their bills on time, so that's a part of it, too.
Anything else?
Well, that's all I have about this. I will see you guys again next month, I don't, I'll make the first meeting, but we'll come around with budget talk next month, so.
Always an exciting, oh, budget tanks start, hey there.
Rob, thank you for coming in tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm glad you're here, appreciate it, we will uh see you in the morning.
Sounds good, you guys have a good night.
You got nothing to add on the burn ban?
Well, the only thing I have to add is that it's, it always seems like it's ten percent of the population that demands ninety percent of your attention, so. You know, it seems like the ones that are here, that were here, are the ones that have the common sense that are being punished for that ten percent, you know, and and it's in every industry you deal with, that's what we see.
If you need the case.
That's all.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yes. Uh, first of all, weight limits, there really isn't much of an update there, they're not tell, they're not telling me when they're going to be coming off, so I anticipated the end of this week, but I'm not sure, but.
I I thought I saw a a social media post from the journal that said tomorrow, but um statewide weight limit restrictions were going to be lifted tomorrow, so.
That was a big secret.
Yeah, uh.
Yeah.
We we have.
We're all trying to do this.
Yep, so.
So, hey, I will just play that for you.
Close to even on a day. They're off everywhere else, what, over Highway one, they're off?
Yeah, and nothing going, north of two, clearly the border is.
Mine had.
There is a, set around, yeah, north of two.
Yeah, yeah, fixed rocks and.
Yeah, right.
Okay, uh, secondly, there are the gravel for fixing our spot spots, I need, um, rather than haul that all the way from Devils Lake, we found a pit, close enough as a pit for it, but. It's a lot, a lot shorter haul for us, and, uh, he wanted five hours a yard, and I did finally get an estimate, it's only like two hundred and fifty yards, so it is going to be less than two thousand dollars.
Elevation?
Um, no, not if it's less than two thousand. But I did have one more thing to add, um, Strata got ahold of me about doing our paper patches, and we went, marked out, wrote out, and I'm estimating that they're going to cost about sixty thousand dollars. There's uh three places, one on eight where we replaced that culvert, dug that culvert in, we're going to put a patch over that. The second one is over by Brockett, by the old Wagner Hardware Store, Sundine Shop, right from out of, closer to the bathroom spot, and then. The last one is on Ramsey Three South Aurora Hills, to the wet areas there, there's some really bad new roads.
Yeah. Yeah, why sits, well, not now, whenever it rains.
Yeah. So I'd like to have a motion to go ahead and do that project.
Been moved, second, to go ahead and approve that paper patch project?
For about sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand. Now, further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you for your patience, appreciate it.
Oh, and the update, uh, we're getting close to the uh ordering culverts for bridges, uh, I think it's going to happen fast, so again, I need to get those ordered, because they're six weeks, six to eight weeks delay of order, so. I might have to order those before they're approved, basically, so then I'll just kind of keep you up to speed on on where we're at there.
And you're still weighed down by stream crossing standards?
I am still weighing down the stream crossing, yeah.
All right.
Up against it.
Yep. Thank you.
I think so.
Yeah. Next up, we have new business, approved site authorization.
Moved and moved, second.
Moved and approved, or moved and seconded to approve the site authorization, that is for linkage and baseball boosters at Ed's Bar. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, next item, we have, uh, Mr. Volk asked to bring up a request from the Ramsey County Fair Board to provide some funding, if we could find it in our. Our uh maybe additional COVID money for bleachers.
So what they're asking is they have a bleacher out there, but it's wood and it's shot, and this would be right underneath the crow's nest, right to the left foot of the crow's nest, they have one of these. And they would like to replace it with this, and that will take care of that spot.
One enough, or?
Yep, they said one would be enough, you know, for this, I mean, it's for the small events they have, like out there, you know, a hundred people usually when they do their marrow races and stuff. Yeah, we're having a big event, like the rodeo that's coming in, but they bring everything in, you don't have to supply anything, this would be for the local events.
And and this would be something that would be, that's permanent, it's going to stay at the the uh Ramsey County Event Center, the Peterson Rodeo Grounds. I served before Commissioner Volk was on that, that committee, I served on the fair board for twelve years, I think it was, and we were, and those bleachers were wood benches. And about every three, four years, they would rot out, and um for safety reasons, we'd have to replace them.
We actually looked at replacing the boards, it's more than what it would cost to replace it.
Okay. Give it to me, man.
So. What I want, round that number off, you want to stick with the uh number that they have indicated on the.
Just approve of the three thousand.
Three thousand?
Three thousand.
Just approve of the three thousand.
Yeah, second.
Moved and seconded that you approve. They already have an existing one, that's.
They have one that's calculated on the.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
So we're just replacing the one wood?
Just replace the one wood one. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, so. We'll let them know when that come out of that.
Yeah.
So, I'm I'm sure they thank you, uh, I know the fair board only gets the limited one now from county, and appreciate any additional help. Grand to visitors, delegations, announcements, uh, water tour, our annual water tour is going to be on and in person, uh, June sixteenth, we'll leave from the Hofstedt Precision Ag Center. We'll do a registration there, we'll have a tour of that facility, and then we'll head on to our tour. Grand, our commissioners throughout the state, as well as legislators are, uh, can attend, uh, free of charge, uh, approved through the Ethics Commission. So we had to do an educational um request through them, and they approved it, so legislators, commissioners, other elected officials, auditors, uh, whatever, can attend that. And uh Water Education Foundation or the Joint Board will pick up the cost of that for you to attend.
Sometimes when the bus breaks, time to get your ride on the school bus.
Yeah, two years ago, our Commissioner Wakefield was on that tour, and our bus blew a transmission on the final legs of the uh. And uh fortunately, Devils Lake Schools had a bus and a driver available for us, and was willing to come out and save the day.
That was nice, but.
It it was actually a very good tour, so.
Similar route as as that year, um, lunch and everything will be at Stump Lake Park, and uh tour that facility. One of the interesting, I think, I think it's interesting is, uh, we're going to uh tour, or not tour, but we're going to have a discussion on the Devils Lake Lemonna Project. And which utilizes plant growth to help filter wastewater before it is released, uh, taking out nutrients out of our wastewater. Uh, we have a fifty-eight acre facility, and it's the second largest in the world, and I think it's a of interesting topic and discussion. We're always talking about water and and whether it be drinking water or water quality in our lakes and streams and rivers. Um, I think uh having a discussion about wastewater is good, we're not going to tour the facility, but we'll observe it from a distance.
No, the smell of lemonna plant has always been the first hint of spring for me.
That's right.
Well, and it it's something that they harvest, um, and whether or not they utilize that that byproduct for cattle feed or fertilizer or whatever.
Fertilizer, maybe, I don't know.
It may be fertilizer, but.
It helps on the plant.
Yeah.
Good fertilizer.
You may be just average times to throw it out, it's still a good way to.
Yeah, it it it's a way to uh give, you know, help filteration of wastewater without the additional of chemicals, so. Um, be an interesting discussion, so, something we're looking forward to.
Should bring my son, we do it by the way, the day, he was curious how that, how was that? I couldn't explain it perfectly.
June, June sixteen. Yep, is the day and that, that's all I have, I want to thank all the commissioners and those in attendance, thank Mr. Jaeger, Mr. Cummings, and Mr. Parks. Um, for sitting through the duration.
Yeah, you got the good one.
And wish Candy a happy birthday, and thank her for twenty-eight years of service to Ramsey County, yesterday was her twenty-eighth anniversary of working for the county, so.
Where she had pros?
No, she's actually on vacation.
She's on vacation.
So, yeah, she well deserved vacation, and uh so wish her well, so we'll wave to her on camera, happy birthday, Candy.
Because she's on vacation watching this live.
Yeah.
As a very brief matter, of course, about the uh lunch that we talked about having in July, although we approved that. Um, I was wondering which of the commissioners we wanted to have quarterback that, and I can volunteer, I have, uh. I I could have three separate propane grills that I could bring to site, which I think should be enough, um, but as far as, as buying the food and the drinks and the whatever.
Oh.
Well, yeah, but I just wanted to know kind of who, who do we want in charge of purchasing, make sure that we're not duping.
How like the doctor's operating, do you want?
I mean, I'm I'm willing to do it, because I appreciate the employees, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, well, I'd like to help too, I mean, we could work with Candy and hammer it out, and we can delegate who can go in and what to take.
I know we had discussed a uh a night at the park or something like that, the park facilities were, those days, yeah, so.
We can do it.
We we can do it, you know, maybe somewhere, last time we did it, we did it on the front lawn, I think it'd be better to do it somewhere different. But uh we'll continue working on, on planning on that, so it doesn't get, doesn't get forgotten.
Yeah, we, someplace with a kitchen would be, maybe maybe we could talk to the fair people, the fair building.
We we could do the the fair building.
It's a space there, plus if you had rain, if you rain, you got inside, so you can just sit down, or you can. Get the rains, when it rains, when it rains.
The facility, and you know, and hook for kitchen, it's right there.
Right, I even wa, I I I did my rain diligence and I washed my vehicle, that's always a surefire, I had a rainstorm that afternoon, but again.
Twenty-third of July, I wrote three of them, yeah.
Yeah, check, that'd be a, that'd be a good spot.
But yeah, so we'll, we'll figure it out and.
Kind of talking like a lunch, right?
Yeah, 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 I figured, you know, cookies, brats, burgers, I'll do the cooking.
Probably want to put a dance there.
I'll flip her.
So, anything, anything else additional? You know, we're good, all right, thank you all.
I do have an announcement.
Yep.
Uh, so there was evacuation of the building yesterday, we have brought a suspect into custody. We've determined that Ramsey County is technically the victim of that due to our lost productivity, I'm having Commissioner Brith as the chairman of the county commission, be the commission in person, is there any problems with that?
You you mean like the the party to the law, to the, to the crime, essentially?
Correct.
That's the most reasonable thing, is the chairman, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody was up to speed on that. Appreciate it, though, but yeah, that's fine.
It it was an interesting warning yesterday.
Well, I didn't, I never got a text message about there being a threat, I got the all-clear text, and I was like, what in the world?
Yeah, I never got the original text, and then I heard it on the news, and then I got the all-clear text.
Yeah, I got the all-clear text, and I had no idea what was going on.
Padded up on the floor.
No, I'm mad at you guys or me, so.
So, yeah, it was, uh, you know, and something we've never experienced, um, you know, Roger's been here thirty-plus years, and he's never been a part of one. Something that I think lessons were, were learned to, we could improve our response to, um, both as an employee side of things, um. Uh, notification type of things, law enforcement things, um, all all the way around, it was, I I I think, uh. It was very much, uh, we'll, we'll chalk it up for an after-action report and and look at improving some of our response capabilities to such a threat. And certainly thank all those that responded and and, you know, the the quick response of of law enforcement to to get somebody in custody as quickly as it did.
Absolutely fantastic.
Yeah, so, um, you know, things went, went off smoothly. Uh, fortunately, it wasn't a worst-case scenario, yeah, so.
Very safe.
Yeah, everything was safe, and, but, so, uh, anything else?
I'm from my end.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
So, we'll, meeting adjourned, seven twenty-one P M.